Welcome, everybody, to our January board meeting. And we had, we've got, had a busy day yesterday. We started off with a busy committee meeting this morning, and we're ready to get rolling here. And so, Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Chair Scholz.
Here.
Vice Chair Coleman.
Here.
Trustee Kishani.
Here.
Trustee Cooper.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Trustee Scheel.
Here.
Trustee Smullen.
Trustee V. Wiger.
Here.
Trustee Harvey.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee McLean.
Here.
Trustee Christopher.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum of voting trustees.
Great, thank you very much. And I would like to begin the meeting by welcoming everybody and also mentioning our standards of conduct for today's meeting. Ohio University seeks to provide opportunities for learning and the free exchange of ideas, including events such as this one. In the interest of ensuring an orderly event, audience members are asked to refrain from engaging in conduct that could disrupt the event. Anyone engaging in disruptive behavior will be subject to removal. And we, we hope to have a very, very productive meeting today for the business of the institution. So, having said that, Mr. Secretary, do we have a motion to, or the board, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Vice Chair Coleman?
Second.
Victor?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Mr. Secretary, do we have any updates to our past minutes from the October meeting?
We do not.
You do not. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the October meeting?
Still moved.
Trustee Evans, second?
Second.
Second. Trustee V. Wiger. Any dissent? The motion is approved. What I'd like to do is give my chair a report of activities the board has had. Before I do, I would first enjoy to make a key introduction of an important new addition to our trusteeship board. Professor Anna Harvey has joined us with a very robust orientation on Wednesday and an introduction to our, our, our efficient use of time on Thursday. It was a busy meeting. And anyhow, Anna, would you like to make a, a comment, a welcoming comment?
Oh, I would just say that I'm honored to serve on the, I grew up here, I went to school here, I'm a faculty member at NYU, and I'm, I look forward to the opportunity to, to work with the university and to do whatever I can to help. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, welcome, welcome. Thank you, Anna. All right. Three topics I'd like to bring folks up to date on, on our activities. We had an opportunity to have lunch yesterday with representatives from the Voynovich School. Dean Weinberg gave a powerful presentation of their activities and followed up in the Academics and Student Success Committee with the Voynovich Schools Dashboard, which is typically given, I think, every five years by the colleges. What stood out for me was the return on investment that Voynovich has generated, the skillful and efficient engagement with communities in the region that empowers them, and the heavily engaged alumni that have graduated from that school. A special mention of state, would be appropriate for State House Majority Representative Jay Edwards, a proud alumnus and very strong and effective force for the acclaimed work the Voynovich School does, and the strong momentum in the region. I am paraphrasing, but his parting words to us were that "The time is now to partner for progress in the region, and through President Nelson's charge to all of us, we intend to engage in ways that benefits our students, faculty, staff, and the vibrant communities in which we live and serve." The second activity was a split session. We had a joint committee meeting that was led by our Vice Chair, Janelle Coleman. The topic was integrated strategic update that informed all trustees on the university's financial situation and the steady progress being made on the planned development and execution driven by the strategic framework. The attention and discipline to active, I'm sorry, the attention and discipline to activate the right leaders and conduct diligent and realistic planning is essential to producing the real change and success mandated through the strategic framework. We are very pleased to hear about the progress. And the third item was last evening, the trustees enjoyed the opportunity to have dinner with the deans. I think all of the trustees would agree, it was a pleasure to meet all of the deans and hear about their visions for and challenges to their efforts to reimagine the academic enterprise and strategically re-align to enhance the student experience and the generation of new knowledge from their faculty. What stood out to me was the high degree of interdisciplinary collaboration among colleges and a university-wide commitment to experiential learning and real-world impact in Ohio communities. Thank you to the deans for all that you do, and it was a really enjoyable evening. So, that's my report. With that, no further ado, Mr. President, can we have your report?
Thank you, Chair Scholz, and, and members of the Board of Trustees and all here today. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the university. One of the things I, we shared with our Board of Trustees is a new document that the Research Office put out called "Fostering an Innovation Ecosystem." And again, this shows the, the level of connections across our university around creating this innovation ecosystem. It virtually, it touches virtually every aspect of our university, and we're excited to be a leader in this area. So, further, I wanted to start by also introducing some new leaders for our university. We do have in the audience today our new General Counsel, Stacy Bennett. Stacy, would you please stand? There you are. Thank you for being here today. Welcome. Stacy, as you can read on the slide, comes from Ohio State University, where she's recently served as Associate Vice President and Senior Associate General Counsel, and we're really excited to have her joining our team. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank our interim General Counsel, Barb Nalazak, who's done an exemplary job in that capacity, and I just want to, in front of all of you, thank Barb. And Barb, if you'd stand, let's give her a round of applause. And then, recently, we also appointed our new Chief Information Officer, Chris Ahmet. Where are you at, Chris? Please stand, and let's give Chris a round of applause. Chris has been at our university for a few years, and I think was at University of Minnesota before coming here, and we're really pleased to have you in this new role, and is very committed to the academic mission of our university, and we appreciate you very much. So, thank you for joining the leadership team as well. We do have a couple of searches that are ongoing right now. One is in the College of Business. Despite twisting his arm and, and trying to appeal to him, Hugh Sherman has decided to step down as dean. He's done an amazing job, and we are in the process, though, of, of searching for a new dean of the College of Business. The search committee has developed a position profile. They're working with Whit Kiefer, and they are progressing. Hopefully, they will have the first round of interviews coming up here soon, as they identify a shorter list of top candidates. And then, as part of a transition, as many of you know, Craig Cornell left the institution in this fall, and Candace Bonager's done a tremendous job in serving in a leadership role as interim. But we are moving forward with a new Chief Enrollment Management Officer search, and I'm very pleased that Robin Oliver and Hugh Sherman have agreed to co-chair that effort, and we'll be moving forward with that search. And we, we're getting input now from all the different constituencies, from faculty, staff, students, as well as other administrators across the university to be part of that search process. So, from, from our strategic pathways that I identified after a lot of listening to faculty, staff, students, alumni, friends of the university, when I first arrived on campus, we developed these strategic pathways that are identified at the bottom, these four key strategic pathways that have evolved into four strategic themes, and from that, these strategic framework initiatives. These initiatives, again, came through a lot of interaction with many different constituents' groups, and, and now we're moving from the framework stage to operationalizing these key initiatives. And as we do that, we're engaging with a lot of the different constituencies and asking for representation on each of these, from faculty, staff, students, as well as other leaders across the university and beyond, external constituencies as well, to be part of this effort. And these are moving forward as we begin to reinvent Ohio University and really look at the future in a, in a, in a very proactive way, that we want to be fearlessly first to the future, a very important part of, of our transition. And this is something that's not unique to Ohio University, but is really permeating throughout the United States as we go through this major transformation in higher education as we see it today. And in reimagining Ohio's future, we've had a number of events from Breakfast for Progress. We've also had open opportunities for students, faculty, and staff to participate in community engagement, and those will certainly continue tremendous feedback, as well as having access for feedback online and through other interactive ways, very, very important part of our process. We also are, we launched in, on Monday of this, this week, the new Ohio Guarantee Plus, which is really extending our fixed tuition and fees. And by the way, we are, are really one of the few, if not the only, university that is truly, truly has a guarantee in the sense that we've, we've included everything in our guarantee, tuition and fees, a very important distinction. There are other universities that have a guarantee, but most of them have it just on tuition. We also, as part of the Guarantee Plus, have, we, we will have individual, excuse me, individualized advising with the, with students, where they can develop their own personalized program towards graduation, and career mentorship and lifelong benefits as part of this process. This is something that is really forward-thinking and really nationally on the leading edge. We're all about student success and the academic experience at this institution, and I get very emotional at these commencement events. We had just the December commencement. Steve Evans was our commencement speaker, did an amazing job. We had over 900 new graduates from Ohio University, and these are students that are going to go out and make a significant difference in our society in improving the quality of life of others, or contributing in other ways towards our country's and our world's success. And so, we continue to celebrate that. Student safety and security is another very important element, and our university community has made significant progress over the last few months as we've worked collaboratively with students, faculty, and staff to eliminate hazing. You know, we've, we've gained a lot of, of news coverage about the hazing that has gone on here, but I think what we are trying to do is create the safest environment for our students, so they can have the type of positive experience here that will be unparalleled for any other university, whether in Ohio or beyond our borders. And we're proud of the proactive efforts that we've had around hazing, as well as dealing with other safety issues like sexual assault. We have the Transition Success Program that has been phenomenal, was beginning back in 2007, to help first-year students reach success by providing them with resources they need to be successful. And that free tutoring and academic touchpoints is continuing to expand, and truly has had a profound impact on our campus community. Our online programs, which are a more growing part of our university's success, continue to be ranked and recognized nationally and internationally. Our, our RS, RN to BSN program, for example, was recognized as number eight in the nation as far as value and, and quality. Other programs, like our Graduate Engineering Program, was 38th in the nation. When you think of the hundreds of graduate programs we have in engineering, significant success. Our Graduate Information Technology Program, our Graduate Business MBA Program as well, and our best online bachelor's programs, again, significant success on the national stage. One of the leaders in moving our university forward, as I said earlier, has been Dr. Hugh Sherman, and he received an honorary degree from the University of Pecs Faculty of Business and Economics recently in Hungary. And Hugh, are you here today? Not here. So, I just wanted to congratulate him, and he was with us last night and yesterday, and we appreciate all that he continues to do for our university, and is truly an amazing international scholar in his own right. I had the opportunity to, to travel with a small delegation of our faculty and, and university leaders to Leipzig University in December to re-sign the university's memorandum of understanding and to participate in an event celebrating the students who graduated from the dual-degree program. And so, on the left, we have Rector Shukin, and she, she has also visited here my first year when I was president, and I was happy to return the visit to Leipzig University. For those of you that don't know, Leipzig University is celebrated in December, their 610th anniversary. You know, we break about 1804, and our 200 and some years of history, 610 years of history. And they're one of the oldest universities in the world, and we have had a close affiliation with them for a number of years, going back to the transition and reconciliation in Germany between East and West. They're in Leipzig, as many of you know, is in the former East Germany, and, and so, it was, it was a great trip. And on the right, our graduates, we had a graduate event at the U.S. consulate in Leipzig with some of our recent graduates through the dual-degree program that we have with Leipzig University. You know, our university spans, we talk a lot about research, but I want to make sure we recognize the breadth of our university through creative activities and discovery and the experiences that our students have in our College of Fine Arts. Ruthie and I have, for the second year in a row, had the opportunity to judge student projects in a, in the Fine Arts College and to present awards. They had a professional juror as well, so it's always interesting to see if there's any alignment between the things, the projects that Ruthie and I select versus the professional juror. But it's a wonderful experience to see the creativity of these students and to recognize and celebrate their successes. Also part of our success, and sometimes we forget, certainly our faculty are a core part of our university, but we have a lot of people behind the scenes that really make a difference. And the Student Affairs had an all-staff spring kickoff, and we recognize the Ask Me Service Awards that span back over 30 years, people that have worked at Ohio University and are contributing every day to our success. The interactions, the impact that these people have on our students and their experience is tremendous. It truly is a family of people that make a difference here at Ohio University, and I appreciated Student Affairs organizing that event. And speaking of Student Affairs, they will be featured among 27 schools in March, the diverse issues in higher education, as one of the most promising places to work in Student Affairs. So, kudos to Dr. Pina, but his whole team, and he would be the first to tell you that he has a great team, but the culture of this institution and the support that they provide in that context is something that we celebrate. And also to Gigi Sekubin, who's our Vice President for Diversity and Inclusion, and the role that she plays as part of this process as well. Beyond our own borders, we want to, as I mentioned with Leipzig, have even more robust global engagement, and we've created, during this time of, of financial challenges, we also have new opportunities. And one of those is the Presidential Global Engagement Fund. We're soliciting for new grant proposals around that. The deadline is January 31st, and this will create new opportunities in, in teaching as well as in research and, and innovation. And so, these will be like mini grants to stimulate new types of initiatives in this area. Speaking of new initiatives, arts and sciences is an example of where we have focused on social forces that shape technology, critical questions which society must discuss, and the importance of technical literacy. So, that interface between technology and society, and we all recognize how important this is in an ever-growing way, and how much it permeates through the digital transformation of Ohio University. In early November, I participated, I continue to serve on the Executive Committee for the Commission on Economic and Community Engagement within the Association of Public and Land Grant Universities. We met in San Diego. I also participated in a panel with three other university presidents and provosts at this meeting that was attended by a couple thousand individuals, and, but I had the chance to speak about the value of engagement in promotion and, and tenure. And that's something, as we create this engagement ecosystem, how important that is as we span across our university and, and extend that into our region. The breadth of our faculty expertise is truly tremendous. This is a celebration, this slide is a celebration of a book project and lecture about an Amish community of leaders, "A Life Through the Lens of Photo Collection" by Amish and Mennonite Communities, that was authored by Melissa Thomas, who's an Assistant Professor in Family Medicine here at Ohio University. And we had a forum where we had leaders from the Amish and Mennonite communities on campus in the Baker Ballrooms to discuss their, their communities, their culture, their dynamics, their beliefs, a really fascinating dialogue here at our university. Yesterday, you heard some about the Voynovich School and tech growth, it's certainly an important part of our success. I wanted to celebrate their recent $5.05 million award by the state in competitive funding process for venture development services, and it's a great partnership with the Third Frontier. Dave Scholz, our, our Board Chair, serves as a Board Member. I'm on the Advisory Committee for the Third Frontier, but we're very, very proud of the Voynovich School and for tech growth and the tremendous impact they have, really the millions of dollars they've generated. Every $1 of state money there at the bottom line invested generates about $24 in economic activity, and many, much of that is in our region of southeast Ohio. We also, you've heard about John Sabrow and Guy Reeffler, but they continue to do amazing work, and they recently received a $3.5 million grant, pilot funding, from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And this is the first stage of a grant to develop a, a actual plant in one of the small communities near Athens here to actually facilitate the precipitating out and cleaning up of streams, but precipitating out these iron oxide solids that are used in development of paint pigments that are being marketed commercially all over the world. It's a fascinating project, and I'm just so excited that this continues to evolve in really positive ways. One of the things that we're doing as part of One Ohio is making sure that we understand what the workforce is, what the workforce needs are, and what businesses are telling us around our region. Last year in Zanesville, we had a workforce summit, and we're getting ready later this month to have one at Ohio University Southern on the future of the workforce for that area. And it'll include representatives from across the spectrum that are part of the Arton area, and, and I applaud Dean Pennington for her work in that area and providing leadership in that context, but very, very important that we hear that voice as part of our overall planning. We're also extending the opportunities for students at Ohio University. The HTC has been very successful and internationally recognized program, but as you know, we have the Ohio Honors Program that is growing at about 300 to 350 new students a year, and part of that development includes a new Academic Engagement Center in the repurposed former presidential residence, and that project has started, and we're excited to see that progress. We're recognized as a national leader in sustainability and recycling, and this is just one example of that, the, where we had a, as part of a parade, celebrating our environmental responsiveness, and we were among the top 50 colleges as far as best recycling programs for 2019. Our new buildings tend to be on the cutting edge as far as energy and environmental design. The Ellis Hall Project was gold-certified for the renovation of that 115-year-old building. Ellis Hall becomes the 13th LEED-certified project building on our Athens campus and the fourth gold-status building on our campus. We had a Fourth Annual Equal Challenge where we partnered with students across the college, colleges, and university holistically among disciplines to create sustainable solutions for Ohio University's campus. And the winner this year was a team of students that proposed converting the university's combustion engine utility vehicles, our UTVs, into a fleet of electric UTVs. The Patton College has continued to provide leadership on a variety of fronts, including an event that I had the privilege of participating in, the college's EdTalks, kind of designed after TED Talks. And these were the speakers and their topics among our faculty. It's an amazing program, and I wanted to mention that we've been selected to host a TED Talks event on our campus in March. Very competitive process to be able to host one of those, and it really adds to our theme around challenging dialogues and civil discourse, and I, I'm really excited to be able to announce that as well today. The Kennedy Lecture continues to provide and amplify dialogue around important research topics, animal therapy, for example. We had Brandon McMillan, who's our most recent Kennedy Lecturer, a three-time Emmy Award winner, producer of the CBS show Lucky Dog. He also hosts that show. If any of you've had the chance to see that, he takes dogs that have been abandoned and turned into shelters, and trains them and gives them to people who have special needs, and it's an amazingly powerful message. Faculty are helping our elementary school teachers. Our Ohio University researchers received a $3.2 million grant from the Institute for Educational Sciences. These are the two faculty, Julie Owens and Steve Evans. Again, Steve is our newest university distinguished professor, but this is significant. Anytime you get grants of over a million, that's, that's a big deal, and I'm mentioning a number of them right now that are happening at our university. And this program is designed to assist educators with implementing strategies, strategies to help children with emotional and behavioral disorders succeed in, in schools. And again, our faculty are, are on the cutting edge. We have faculty here who could be anywhere but have chosen to be here at Ohio University, and we celebrate their successes each year, and I had the opportunity since our last board meeting to participate in our awards ceremony, celebrating research and teaching excellence. Speaking of research excellence, Tad Malinsky, who has received one of the research awards, he has a recent publication that really looks at the bad cholesterol and tries to understand that more fully, and there are divisions within bad cholesterol that are more significant relative to promoting cardiovascular disease, that he, his research, again, is really on the cutting edge in helping us to understand that, and he's getting international attention around that, and this has potential to profoundly impact the way in which people with cholesterol issues are, are treated. Our faculty are called in as expert witnesses. This is faculty Haley Dushinsky, who is an Associate Professor of Anthropology, Director of the Center for Law, Justice, and Culture, who was participating, and she, she was asked to testify, actually, in Congress relative to some of the humanitarian issues in to testify actually in Congress relative to some of the humanitarian issues in Kashmir, which is in India, but is kind of a transition area. It's been a place of tension between Pakistan and India for many, many years. Dominique Mishkowski, Assistant Professor in the College of Arts and Sciences, was featured in a BCB Future article about the impact of ordinary medicine, so we don't often think about having an impact on even our positive emotions, and again, on the cutting edge. One of our professors of African-American literature discovered a reference to an unpublished novel while researching writer Claude McKay, a key literary figure in Harlem, the Harlem Renaissance, and it's, this discovered manuscript is now being published in a release in February next month as the publisher's Black History Month selection, and so we're excited about that level of recognition. Nancy Stevens, who I talk about often, is, landed herself as if one of the top 50 science stories from last year in Discover Magazine. So looking at, these are international spectrum of articles, but one of the top 50 for her research on a particular type of tiger that she discovered in her work in Africa. The Media in Medicine Initiative Around Veterans Project is an award-winning documentary that is created by the collaboration of Ohio faculty members Todd Fredericks and Brian Plow, and really adding to our success in communication and reimagining not only our research enterprise, but also our academic enterprise. We celebrated the 30th anniversary of the Infectious and Tropical Disease Institute in December, Ken Johnson and I with Mario Gralva, with the work that he does as Director of that Institute. They've done amazing work in Ecuador, and we've sent a number of our students as well as faculty to Ecuador to participate in those activities. We celebrated the 50th anniversary of the Geography Department. Now, for those of you that don't know that are part of the Board or in the audience, I'm a geographer, so they gave me the privilege of giving the keynote address, and it was a wonderful event in the sense of the opportunity for me to reflect on my meanderings as a geographer during my career and the types of experiences I've had, and so that was in November. We also celebrated notable alumni award recipient Ryan Phillips, who is with NBC6, a meteorologist. He also is an instructor at that other university that we don't talk too much about to the west of us, but it was a fun occasion. So sometimes people say, why can't we just keep things the way they are at our university? Why can't, why, why do we have to change? You know, we have great faculty, we have great programs, why is there a need to change? Well, our world is changing, the needs of society are changing, the economy is changing. So I want you to look, if you could all focus on this graph, because it's going to start to move on you.
Okay.
And I want you to, this is the year 2000, and look at, these are the best global brands ranking and their brand value, and their brand value, the top 15. So you can look right there in 2000, Coca-Cola, Microsoft, IBM, Intel, and go down the list, GE, et cetera, and watch what happens, and this is going to go fast, but just watch and look at how these different entities start to show up at the top. 2004, and what's happening? And all of a sudden, you start seeing things like Facebook and Google, and Microsoft is still up there, but look at GE and what's going on with them, and some of the other traditional things that have been part of our economy. It's, look at Apple.
Is this your 401K?
That's right. I wish this was my 401K. But it's extraordinary. It's extraordinary in just the last 20 years, 15 to 20 years, what is happening in our society and how that is impacting the students that we are educating here at Ohio University, and the need for change. That's what society is demanding. It just goes through 2018, but look at now, Apple, Google, Amazon, Microsoft, Coca-Cola is still up there fairly high, but, but just amazing to see this transformation, and that's the environment that we are in today, not only in Ohio, but throughout the world. Those are the, that's the environment that our students are going out into, and we need to prepare them for that. International Education Week, we celebrated that also in mid-November, and again, I was proud to participate in various activities associated with International Education Week. We celebrate, we have around 1,200 international students at our university from over 100 different countries, and they enrich us every day. Our athletic teams, you heard from our new Athletic Director Julie Cromer yesterday, but we, we celebrated another bowl win at the famous Idaho Potato Bowl, and Coach Solich was doused in french fries, and, but Coach Solich set history this year for the Mid-America Conference as finishing the season with a total of 113 wins, which is the most of any football coach in the history of the Mid-America Conference, so really proud of him. Also, one of our alums was named recently to be the coach of the national women's soccer team, and so we're really proud of Andenovski, Andenovski, I believe, and so anyway, he's now our US Women's National Team Coach, Head Coach. And even though Joe Burrow is not an alum of Ohio University, through his comments on the Heisman Event and talking about Athens and our region, and the follow-up from one of our alums, Will Drebold, we had over half a million dollars in gifts to the food pantry, so an amazing story there. It really highlights our food scarcity needs among our students as well as those in our area. So with that, I'd like to now transition to Open Ohio, and I'd like to call up members that are here from our Athens community as well as our university, and this presentation will be led by Sarah Davis, who is an Associate Professor in the Voinick School. So Sarah and team, if you would come forward, and then as you come forward, if you would also introduce yourselves, but I think a couple of these people you will recognize from their leadership position within our community as well, but if you'd each introduce yourself after you get up here as well, that would be great.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm just waiting on the clicker. I'm Sarah Davis, and...
I just remind everyone to speak into the microphones?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Davis, and I'm going to be talking a little bit about a new program called Open Ohio, and I have several people here with me today who have been contributing to Open Ohio over the past, before it was even called Open Ohio, we had some working groups that we started about three years ago, and so I'll be introducing them as I, as I talk about the program. But I want to thank President Nellis for the opportunity to introduce some of the work that we've been doing with this program. We are living in a time of unprecedented social, technological, and environmental changes, and I think that the graphic that you just showed about the transitions of the different businesses that are dominating the economy illustrate that. And in this time, we need to have the most creative minds from all different backgrounds and perspectives working together to help us find the best solutions moving forward into the future. But despite all of these innovations and communication tools that have been developed, we find ourselves retreating into silos of people who are like-minded, we self-select into groups, often online in communication, and we find ourselves talking to people who think like us about the matters that, the things that matter most to our community instead of reaching out to get these diverse perspectives that are most necessary. So about three years ago, I started some working groups of faculty, staff, students, and community members to just talk about what was driving some of the polarizing dialogue that we were seeing at that time and has continued to this day. And Open Ohio was eventually born out of those working groups. We had working groups with a lot of different people, and, but repeatedly, over and over again, the things that emerged from those working groups included a sense of growing fear about talking with people who disagree with us face-to-face, and a lack of time in our busy schedules to devote to engaging in meaningful dialogue about the things that really matter to us and matter for our community. So the idea of Open Ohio is simple. The idea is to create a space and a time for people to engage in face-to-face dialogue about the things that matter to them most, and this is something that our students are increasingly unpracticed in, and the idea is to bring together people from all walks of life and to sit face-to-face and actually see the humanity in the person across from them when they disagree with them. And this is designed also to encourage interdisciplinary collaboration and to provide a bridge between campus and the community. And so in doing this, people engage in dialogue, and the topics that emerge from these conversations we're using as a foundation for interdisciplinary collaboration of experts on campus and as a way to try to break down some of the silos. And we launched this on campus in the fall of 2018 and have hosted over 100 conversations, and we've had more than 400 people participate in these conversations. I want to make it very clear that a lot of people have collaborated on this project. This is not just my work. As I mentioned earlier, there are four people here who have contributed since the beginning and were involved in some of those very early working groups, and then have stayed involved over the last three years as Open Ohio has evolved and taken on different realizations. But there are a number of other people, and some of them were in the room earlier today, and unfortunately, they're not in the room anymore to hear this, but they also contributed substantially to this effort. We were able to host a collaborative art and science exhibit in the spring of last year, and we did that at three different locations, both on and off campus, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But we're not just having these conversations on campus, we're also having them in the community as a way to try to break down the siloing that occurs within the university community and creating a bridge to the surrounding communities. The idea behind these conversations is just to create a space that's open for anyone to participate. So there are some images here that show the different spaces where we hosted conversations in Baker University Center, a place where there's a lot of through-traffic, and people could just kind of wander into the conversation space. We invite them to participate, and they have to consider a few simple agreements before they participate, and I want to thank Laura Black, who was in the room earlier and is a professor in communications, for helping to develop these simple agreements, and this is what they are. Be fully engaged. Agree to listen. Agree to share. Be open to new perspectives. That's it. It's pretty simple, but we found that the outcomes can be fairly powerful, and once people are engaged in discussion, we have other prompts that help them get started to talking with people that they don't know, and we have facilitators, some of which are here, everyone here has acted as a facilitator at some point, to help, to help the people who are in these conversations engage in active listening during the conversations. The topics, we also encourage people to leave notes about what they've discussed, and then we have a group of facilitators, artists, and scientists that review those notes to look for topics that seem to be of collective interest to the community, so topics that come up over and over again. And those topics then become the foundation for the next series of conversations that we hosted, and we encourage pop-up artistic responses in the conversation space that provides a tangible and visible reflection on what people talked about, so that the people who engage in these conversations actually know that their voice was heard. And so I'm just going to flip through these pictures to give you an idea of the kind of pop-up artistic responses that occurred in the open conversation spaces. We have a student organization of undergraduate playwrights on campus that Mary Beekler is the, Mary Beekler is sitting to my right here, she's the advisor for that group, and she coordinated some, got the students to coordinate monologues around some of the topics that had come up in conversations, and they delivered these monologues, and then we had some reflective discussion on the content of those monologues. Nathan Andery, who is a professor in theater, brought some of his theater students...
Dance.
Oh, I'm sorry, he's a professor in dance, brought his dance students to do a spontaneous interpretation of the topic of turbulence in the conversation space, and I have a link embedded here, and I understand you'll have access to these slides if you want to check that out and see what that was like. We then were able to support some more developed art pieces done by artists in collaboration with folks in the sciences, and there were five different pieces that were developed around this theme of navigating turbulence, and they became part of an art exhibit that was both interdisciplinary and interactive. And these are some images from the opening exhibit that we hosted in Baker University Center in the same place where we had those conversations, and you can see the interactive nature of the exhibit that engaged people. To give you an idea of what these pieces were like, this was one of the pieces that was done by Professor Melissa Haviland. She's done a series called You Can't Take It With You, and this is the hurricane and tornado, which, this is handmade paper that she attached to repurposed materials and used an old rowing machine that could, that could spin the hurricane and the tornado, and she had working mothers performing in the exhibit spaces to power the tornado and hurricane. And this was a reflection on both migration issues and climate change, and she worked with someone, and she consulted with someone in meteorology as well as people in other fields of science to do this. This is work that was done by a graduate student named Owen Lowry. It's called the Entropy Machine, and it responds to the movement of humans as they approach the screen, and the colors and shapes are underpinned by real physical equations. He collaborated with someone in engineering to make that happen. This one is called Transforming Trauma, and if you look at the image on the far right of the screen, that is what this sculpture looked like at the end of the exhibits, of all three exhibits. Each flower that you see on that sculpture represents someone's story of trauma, and people were invited to write down their story of trauma on a small piece of paper, then fold it into a flower, and a counselor installed these flowers onto the sculpture. So this work was done by Rachel Sequel, who's here on my left, and she is a counselor that works with, that used to work with the Counseling and Psychological Services on campus. She's now opened her own practice in the community, and she's also an alum of Ohio University. But this sculpture provided an opportunity for everyone who viewed it to reflect on the stories of trauma that our neighbors and friends and students are carrying around with them in our community. We're continuing the conversations, and this, these images are from conversations we held over the summertime in Armory Park, and we did this in collaboration with the Athens Community Relations Committee as well as Mayor Steve Patterson, which is over, he's over here on the right, and he actually built the table that you see in the lower-left corner, and it's, it has a surface that allows you to write directly on it, and the, and the notes are written in chalk, and so we're using that... the notes are written in chalk, and so we're using that as a way to collect, um, the topics that are of interest to people in the broader community as well. So we're to, continuing to collect topics from these ongoing conversations, and we're looking forward to hosting our next art exhibit soon, where the topic that has emerged that we're, uh, organizing this exhibit around is Horizons of Interference. And it's going, we're planning to have the opening exhibit here in Walter Hall in the Rotunda on, starting on March 3rd. And, uh, we're sponsoring four, uh, artists this time that are collaborating in, with different, uh, fields of science. And, uh, one of them is a student and a military veteran, and, um, they're going to be very interesting. Um, so sitting here today, you know, kind of underscores the importance of this particular topic for this exhibit, um, because earlier today, uh, we had, uh, a group of people that were feeling marginalized and silenced in the room. We're sitting here in this circle of people who have, uh, this decision-making power. And Open Ohio is all about breaking through those bubbles and creating spaces and time for people to talk about these issues that they care about face-to-face. I understand that most of the protesters have left, have left at this point, but we intended to go out into the hallway and host, uh, conversations and give them the opportunity to talk about the things that matter. And, um, and all of you are invited to participate in our future conversations as well. So, um, before I wrap it up, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Nicely, who is over here on the left, and she is, has been part of the early working group conversations, and she's been a facilitator for Open Ohio. She's engaged in discussions with students, as well as community members. And she's going to give, she's also the president of City Council, and she's going to give in Athens City, and she's going to give you her perspective on, on this program.
Good morning.
And thanks for having us here today. I thought I'd share two things with you. Some of my observations about the moments that I've seen, that all of us have seen as we facilitated, and then also why I think it's important for our city. A few of these powerful moments, uh, one of them was a small one-on-one discussion on world religions. There have been multiple groups at some of these other things that, uh, gatherings that you've seen, um, on the slides, where people were, were filtering through, both at the Baker Center, then at the City Park, uh, sitting in groups of four to six to discuss topics ranging from concerns for the community to thoughts on the participants' hopes for the nations and nation and world. Groups passing through Baker Center, um, talking about issues of diversity and sexual assault, when this was a, a big concern, uh, last year when we first started these discussions, and still is. And then other groups of faculty, citizens, and students participating in art and conversations at these different events. There are three important components that I see, uh, from the municipal perspective. It provides uninterrupted time to hear what people are concerned about. It provides an interaction between campus and city that provides a new focus on our community. And it builds communication and fosters opportunities to discuss issues on which we may have diverging views. Uh, I, I was struck by, um, my granddaughter and my son both being willing to come to one of these events when they were in town moving my granddaughter in, so I asked her about it. And I said, "What struck you about this event?" And she says, "Well, it was a group of strangers, and they were able to sit and talk about topics they didn't always agree on, but we all listened." So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sarah, and to all of you, and, uh, we certainly, uh, value tremendously, uh, open dialogue and, uh, and, uh, having the opportunity to partner with, uh, with the community as well to create that environment. And we appreciate the presentation today and the, and all the great work that you do, and we truly value, with the mayor and the president of our city council here today, I just wanted to say how much we value the relationship we have, uh, which is, that, 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 uh, relationship has been, received international recognition, actually, and, and, uh, we want to continue to build on that. And, and, and even the, the further dialogue with, uh, those that were here today, uh, again, uh, those are important, uh, points of, of contact, and, uh, and we want to certainly continue to communicate with them, and we, we do, uh, work very closely with their representatives through Faculty Senate, and we appreciate that, uh, perspective as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any comments, questions? I'm sure that, uh, board members may have some.
Thank you, uh, for the presentation. I, uh, it's music to my ears. I've dealt a lot in, in, uh, some of the political world, and I wish we could take this to Columbus and to Washington and, um, but what I, what I'm really excited about when I listen to you, all of you, and, um, is when it comes to our students. And, uh, there's so much shouting at each other now, you know, where there, there's no listening going on, and the more s- sitting down and understanding that there's, they have much more in common than not, uh, cannot be stressed enough to our students. And the more your program can touch every one of our students, they have the time to actually learn, stop and listen to each other. Imagine how much better prepared they'll be once they graduate. So, I just wanted to thank you guys.
Well, I'd just like to thank you and, and mention, um, that, uh, you know, the impact of university, we state goals, we want to be nationally prominent, we want to be internationally recognized. I, I think that what this is a great example of is, is that just in our backyard, you know, if, if we, if we can solve the, the world's problems, um, let's not overlook the problems just feet, miles away from us. And this is a great example of that, and, and I commend Steve and Chris. You know, the university and the community haven't always had the best dialogue, right? And, and it takes kind of an openness and a leadership in people to kind of change that on both sides. And I think that, uh, in the last several years, we've tried to do better at that, and I think, uh, I think there's obviously signs that we have, and, uh, but it's never a, a done bit of work. These kinds of activities help cement that. So thank you for that. The other thing is I know there's a medical school being built, um, on our campus, and one of the things that I become aware of, I don't know the details of, but they really respect the value of art in that facility. And so you, you might want to talk to Dean Johnson about that sculpture of yours, in terms of where you might want to, what, he, he may consider displaying it there, because it's a very powerful piece of art. So, so anyhow, thank you very, very much, uh, for informing the board and, and the community about your activities. Thanks.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, you may have mentioned this. If you, if you did, I apologize, because I don't always listen well, it's me. But wha- what are your plans and dreams, uh, of your organization and your activities going forward?
Well, we'd like to continue this and expand it. Um, it's, it's taken up a lot of my time, and this is not what I normally do. I'm actually a biologist and ecologist, and I have an active research program and teaching program that I, that is, are usually my primary responsibilities, and this took a lot of extra time and work on my part. So right now, we're trying to put together a team of people that can, that can carry this forward. Um, and I've been working with, um, with the Student Affairs Office, Jason Pina and Brad Cohen, in the Office of Instructional Innovation, who have supported this tremendously. And we've been talking about different strategies for potentially, um, expanding this, um, but uh, we still need to figure out a way that is going to support that sustainably, um, in a way that works. We're relying on a lot of people volunteering their time. We have been able to support two graduate students to help run it this year, and, but the dynamic of having to train students to, to carry out these conversations, um, when they're going to be transient and move out, is, um, is something that we have to, we have to think carefully about. So the model of Open Ohio is constantly evolving, and we are open to input at any juncture, and, um, and anyone who wants to help with the process and, and help it evolve. So, um, so there's a lot of possibilities for how it can go forward.
So, there's something similar to this in Columbus called the Big Table.
Yes.
And it's led out of the Columbus Foundation. Um, and they have strategic partners in the community that help orchestrate a day, this sounds like it's longer than a day, obviously, of conversations, but something you may want to think about going forward is, is there a strategic partner in the community that can help you move this forward?
Yes, there are a lot of other activities that are going on that are very compatible, that are complementary to this, and there is a project going on that's called the Community Table, um, with the Athens County Foundation, and, um, and they have been partners on this, um, that, those conversations are focused more solely on the community and less involvement of university. But, uh, we are working together, and I am familiar with, with the project that, that you're talking about. Um, and we used a lot of different, um, models to kind of, to build this Open Ohio concept, working with the National Institute for Civil Discourse and, uh, other groups that have been working on how to promote dialogue in this way. Um, and so we've borrowed some of those strategies, um, and built it into something that works for our community. So, but that's a great idea, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if you have considered, or I don't know if folks would be interested, but it seems to me there are many mediators, mediation groups, arbitrators, arbitration groups, uh, some of them have, uh, resources that might be interested in supporting this kind of a notion linked with, you know, community mediation and so forth, so.
Yes. Yes, that's also a great idea, and we do have some mediators from the community that are involved in this too. Including Rachel Siegel, who is a facilitator and mediator.
Gary, you may be a guest lecturer. Any other comments? We'll close by saying congratulations, this is fantastic, and thank you for your extended effort, uh, from your, your biology laboratory to the, the laboratory of the community.
Yes, well, you know, it is a need, and I thank you for your support, and I know you have a lot of difficult decisions to make, so, but I appreciate your willingness to listen, and I hope that you can engage in some of these conversations.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much. And that, with their presentation, that concludes my report as well.
Wonderful, thank you, what an exciting report.
Exciting group, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on to, uh, uh, listening to, um, committee highlights and resolutions, but before I do, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, uh, kind of shout out a few folks, a few groups, um, for helping us be so productive over the last day and a half. Uh, the first group is our legal team. I think that, uh, in the context of the past couple days, uh, we've, uh, really asked our legal team to kind of, uh, be on board, uh, on, on, on topics quickly and efficiently and productively, and, and I just want to give a shout out to them. And also thank that, um, the other context of, um, you know, the, the ability to run an efficient and productive and, and safe meeting is the security group that helps us, uh, every time we're on campus here, to, uh, maintain a productive environment so we can, we can do the business of the institution. And so thank you to the OU Police Department. All right, so, um, let's move to the committee highlights and resolutions. Uh, Trustee Cooper, would you please give the Academics and Student Success Committee, oh, I guess not. How about if, how? Are you ready for this? Trustee V. Wagner, would you please give us the Resources, Facilities, and Affordability Committee report?
Thank you, Chair Scholl. This will be the report of the Resources, Facilities, and Affordability Committee meeting held yesterday. The committee received an update on sustainability, as well as information items in the agenda, including the treasury update, the financial update, and the facility projects update. Additionally, the committee considered the following resolutions. Investment Policy Statement Resolution. This resolution, originally located on Tab 12 of the January 2020 Agenda, is, has been edited, and the version is on your OneDrive at this point. It approves the Ohio University Foundation Investment Policy Statement as adopted by the Foundation's Board on November 8th, 2019, as it applies to the university endowment funds and long-term century bu- bond funds. The committee recommends the approval of this resolution. I motion to approve the Investment Policy Statement Resolution. May I have a second?
Second. Okay, second from Trustee Krishani. Um, any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you. This, then the next resolution is on the Capital Projects. It's located on Tab 13 of the January Agenda and authorizes the university to begin implementation of the following projects. The OUD Medical Education Building 2 renovation, the OUL HVAC and Energy Energy Efficiency Improvements Phase 1, the Innovation Center Infrastructure Upgrades, the OUC Stevenson Center Roof Chil- Replacement at Chillicothe, the Scripps Hall Ground Floor E-Sports Renovation, and the Eastern Campus Health and Physical Education Center Roof Replacement. These were all explained at some length by Steve Wood, and the committee recommends the approval of this resolution. I motion to approve the Capital Projects Resolution.
Is there a second? Second. Trustee Evans. Any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you. And the last resolution from the Resources Committee is the HCOM Building Naming Resolution. This resolution, located on Tabs 14 of the Agenda, resolves that the Medical Education Building under construction at 191 West Union Street, Athens, Ohio, will be named Heritage Hall. The committee recommends the approval of this resolution, and I motion to approve 2020 HCOM Building Naming Resolution.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Chair Coleman. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you. And there are no further resolutions and no consent agenda items from the Resources Committee. Detailed minutes of the committee's discussions will be made available on the Board of Trustees' website. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Trustee Cooper. Um, do you want to do that? We did it through all these. Okay. Trustee Cooper, would you please give us the Academics?
I will, yes, thank you, and apologize for my absence.
No problem.
Yesterday, the, uh, Academics and Student Success, uh, Committee had, uh, four reports and six, uh, resolutions on the consent agenda. Our first report, uh, came from the Voinovich School, was their dashboard covering the last five years, uh, and it illuminated the success of the school and its many accomplishments over that time, and we thank Dean Weinberg for that report. We also had a report from Intercollegiate Athletics. Our athletic director, Julie Cromer, was here, uh, and gave us an update, uh, including the dashboard and the success of the athletes academically, and they're doing quite well. Third report, uh, was, uh, Regional Higher Education and the alignment of the regional campuses with the Athens Campus Colleges. And, uh, fourth report on remediation, uh, included the, uh, number of students that are involved in the remediation courses and the, and the cost to the university. With respect to the six consent agenda resolutions, um, I just mentioned them briefly. Uh, it is our recommendation or the recommendation of the committee that those remain on the consent agenda of, uh, of this body. We had a, uh, and these are Tabs 6 through 12, 6 through 11. The first one, uh, is a new degree program in the Patton College of Education, a Bachelor of Science in Education in Early Childhood and Elementary Education, and it simply changed the age group, uh, of the students involved, uh, from, uh, age three up through sixth grade. Uh, had a consent, uh, agenda item from the, uh, Colleges of Health Sciences and Professions for a new degree, Doctor of Athletic Training. It, the resolution, uh, replaces the master's degree and adds, um, uh, additional qualifications to achieve a doctor in athletic training. It's, uh, one of the few programs in the country. A consent resolution, changing the name, uh, of, in, from HCOM, changing the name of the Family Medicine to Primary Care. Another, uh, item from HCOM, um, for lack of a, a better description, uh, the abolition of the, uh, Geriatric Medicine and Gerontology College, although, as, uh, we were eager to learn. uh, we were eager to learn, uh, that the services and medical care will continue under a different name within, uh, within different colleges of H-Com. There's also a resolution, uh, on the consent agenda, uh, which was just a program review of the Voinovich, uh, Environmental Studies Group. And the recommendation is to continue the Environmental Studies Group within the college. And, uh, as I mentioned, we, the committee recommends that these resolutions remain on the consent agenda for the full board. Thank you, Trustee Cooper, for such a thorough summary. Um, we'll move on to Audit Committee. Trustee Kashani, would you please give the Audit and Risk Management Committee report?
Yes, thank you. The Audit and Risk Management Committee received the Chief Audit Executive's Report from Jeff Davis. Uh, we also received the final, um, external auditor update from Plant Moran. Uh, the committee then went into executive session for a presentation on information security. And there are no consent agenda items and no further resolutions from the Audit and Risk Management Committee. Detailed minutes of the committee's discussion will be made available on the Board of Trustees' website.
Thank you, Trustee Kashani. And Trustee Goodman, would you please give us the Governance Committee report? Governance and Compensation Committee report?
Yes, thank you. Before I do, I, I did believe that we all noted, um, first of all, the President's presentation where he referred to the, um, university to the west of us. But that ticked off in my mind, the slide was early presented with respect to our new General Counsel. And I noted with great delight that the President referred to her place of employment as Ohio State University because if you look at the higher revised code, you will see that it refers to this university. It refers to it as "The Ohio University." And while he was a good friend of mine, and unfortunately just passed away, President Ed Jennings created this mystery of the famous inserting "the." And so I'm pleased to thank the President in his slide to accurately refer to Stacey's place of employment as Ohio State University. So, with that compliment to the President, um, we received as a committee, a, um, report on affiliated, um, entities. Uh, our interim General Counsel, Barb Nalazak, uh, presented, uh, what the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit, uh, said in their December 12th opinion with respect to the liability of universities and trustees, which strikes to the heart of all of us here, on our, uh, the threshold that is needed to, for a plaintiff to succeed in holding trustees and a university liable for student-on-student sexual misconduct. The defendants in that case were Michigan State and her trustees. Uh, we were then, um, presented with two resolutions, which were not on the agenda. Um, and they were presented by our Vice President for Finance. And they had to do with, uh, the university human resources seeking approval to develop and implement two early retirement programs or a voluntary separation or retirement, uh, plan. Uh, the first plan that was presented by the Vice President, uh, provided for eligible tenured professors, tenured associate professors, and administrative staff who hold the academic rank of tenured professor or tenured associate professor, excluding the Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine. The second resolution, which you will hear about, uh, offered for residential custodial and custodial staff within the Vice President of Finance and Administration and Vice President for Student Affairs Planning Units. The plans, we are told by the Vice President, are expected to open on or about February 3rd and close on or about the 30th of March, and separation from service to occur, uh, by June the 30th of this year. Uh, the President or his designee in consultation with the Chairman is authorized to develop and implement the plans in accordance with all applicable laws. Uh, we've asked the Chairman to read each of the regulate, each of the proposed, uh, resolutions, and at which point I will move each of them separately for approval by the Board.
Sure. Thank you, Trustee Goodman. So, the first, uh, resolution entitled Early Retirement Incentive Plan and/or Voluntary Separation or Retirement Plan for Tenured Professors, Tenured Associate Professors, and Administrative Staff with Academic Rank of Tenured Professor or Tenured Associate Professor. The resolution reads, whereas due to ongoing budgetary concerns, the university has determined that for each of its campuses except Cleveland, that it needs to seek structural efficiencies and personnel costs in the following employee classifications collectively referred to as the planning unit. One, tenured professors; two, tenured associate professors; and three, administrative staff with the academic rank of tenured professor or tenured associate professor. The planning unit does not include the Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine. And whereas the best interest of the university will be served by offering planning unit employees early retirement opportunities to effectuate structural efficiencies and to minimalize the need for other budgetary actions. And whereas the voluntary separation and/or early retirement opportunities will be offered on or about February 3rd, 2020, to provide eligible employees sufficient time to decide whether to participate. Now therefore be it resolved that the President or his designee, in consultation with the Chair of the Board of Trustees, is authorized to develop and implement an early retirement incentive plan, ERIP, and/or a voluntary separation or retirement plan, VSRP, in accordance with the rules of the Internal Revenue Service, State Teachers Retirement System, and the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System as the President deems appropriate, with the objective of reducing personnel in the planning unit. Be it further resolved that the President or his designee is authorized to offer planning unit employees incentives for separation or retirement in accordance with the plan that may include severance on such terms as the President, in consultation with the Chair of the Board of Trustees, deems appropriate. Be it further resolved that the President or his designee, in consultation with the Chairman of the Board of Trustees, uh, may impose conditions for participating in an ERIP or VSRP in accordance with the plan to attract the optimum number of participants and thereby achieve the appropriate level of benefit to the university. Be it further resolved that the Chief Human Resource Officer is authorized to execute the plan document between Ohio University and the ERIP and VSRP participants, and any other instruments, documents, or conveyances necessary to effectuate and implement the plan.
Thank you. Having heard the reading of the resolution, I will move for its approval and look for a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Trustee Cooper? Cooper, second?
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Trustee Goodman.
You read the second resolution?
I will. It is entitled Early Retirement Incentive Plans for University Residential Custodial, uh, and Custodial Staff. That reads, whereas, due to budgetary concerns and after discussion with the bargaining unit, the university has determined its residential custodial and custodial staff within the Vice President for Finance and Administration and Vice President for Student Affairs Planning Units for all university campuses, the planning unit, should be offered an opportunity to participate in a mutually beneficial voluntary early retirement plan. And whereas the best interest of the university will be served by offering planning unit employees early retirement opportunities to effectuate structural efficiencies and to minimalize the need for other budgetary actions. And whereas the voluntary early retirement opportunities will be offered on or about February 3rd, 2020, to provide eligible employees sufficient time to decide whether to participate. Now therefore be it resolved that the President or his designee, in consultation with the Chair of the Board of Trustees, is authorized to develop and implement an early retirement incentive plan, ERIP, in accordance with the rules of the Internal Revenue Service and the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, as the President deems appropriate, with the objective of reducing residential and custodial staff levels within the planning unit. Be it further resolved that the President or his designee is authorized to offer planning unit employees incentives for retirement in accordance with the plan that may include severance on such terms as the President, in consultation with the Chair of the Board of Trustees, deems appropriate. Be it further resolved that the President or his designee, in consultation with the Chair of the Board of Trustees, may impose conditions for participating in the ERIP in accordance with the plan to attract the optimum number of participants and thereby achieve the appropriate level of benefit to the university. Be it further resolved that the Chief Human Resource Officer is authorized to execute the plan document between Ohio University and the ERIP participants, and any other instruments, documents, or conveyances necessary to effectuate and implement the plan.
If you're having heard the reading of the resolution, I will move for its approval. Is there a second?
Second. Trustee Kashani?
Second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Is there any objection?
No.
Yes?
No, no, no. I just wanted, as we, uh, talk about the budget, to say from the side of the student, that, uh, when we look towards, as a board, uh, how we, how we spend our, spend our money, every time we make a financial decision, it needs to be in mind of, are we willing to ask our students to go into debt for this choice? So where we are right now, uh, with the expenses higher than revenue, uh, we, if, if we don't act, that burden is going to fall on the students through increased tuition. So, although, even though as we go now and future with this board, and, and make bold decisions and hard decisions, uh, that, that I feel needs to be in mind of who we serve. So, thank you.
Thank you for your words.
Thanks, Trustee McClain.
Hearing no objection, then look to the motion. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. We then, as a committee, went into executive session to discuss the sale of real estate, the compensation of a public employee, and to confer with the General Counsel regarding threatened or impending litigation. When we came out of executive session, uh, the committee had a resolution, which you will now hear about, regarding Pilcher House. And I've asked Chairman Scholl again to read the proposed resolution.
And Chairman Scholl needs a glass of water, so he's going to turn it over to Secretary Moore.
Declaration of Surplus Property, Pilcher House, 10 East Union Street, Athens, Ohio. Whereas Ohio University holds the Pilcher House located at 10, uh, holds the title to Pilcher House located at 10 East Union Street, Athens, Ohio, referred to as "The Property." And whereas in March 2019, the Board of Trustees was presented the recommendations of the strategic review of 15 small houses, including the property. And whereas the property is currently not serving any university purpose, and whereas, uh, it was recommended that the property be either sold with deed restrictions or the building be leased to a non-university entity. Whereas the university has issued a request for proposals to identify an entity to lease, renovate, and reuse the property, and proposals are due on January 20th, 2020. And whereas the university has not identified a leasing through the RFP, it is in the best interest of the university to sell or otherwise dispose of the property in a timely manner to minimize any additional, uh, deferred maintenance. And whereas the sale or, uh, sale or other disposition of the property would generate revenues, reduce operating and maintenance costs, and be consistent with the goals of the university's fearlessly first strategic framework. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ohio University Board of Trustees hereby declare the property to be surplus property. Be it further resolved, provided that the university is unable to lease the property through the current RFP process, that the President or his designee is hereby authorized to negotiate, evaluate, and otherwise transact, including but not limited to the execution of all necessary documents, the required parcel splits and disposition of the real property consistent with the requirements of Ohio law regarding the disposable sale or other dispositions of Ohio University real property. Be it further resolved that any disposition of property should include deed restrictions to ensure its use is limited to those that are compatible with the mission and strategy of the university.
Thank you. Having heard the reading of the, uh, resolution, I will move for its approval by the trustees. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by, uh, Trustee V. Wager. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. And I would like to join Chairman Scholl in thanking Barb Nalazak and her colleagues from the, um, Legal Department for, uh, the work that they did, um, really on a moment's notice with respect to the resolutions on retirement. And as you just heard, overnight, frankly, because we went into executive session, uh, maybe at a quarter of six, uh, because we're working on overtime. And, uh, the committee worked through the night, was sending, uh, various drafts to the trustees for comment. So, Barb, thank you, uh, for that. Uh, and that, Mr. Chairman concludes the, uh, work of the Governance Committee. And, uh, the full minutes will be available on our trustees' website. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Goodman. Yeoman's work there. Thank you. Um, what I will do is provide a briefing on the Executive Committee report. Yesterday morning, the Executive Committee met. We discussed a number of topics, including a new periodic report to be developed related to real estate, public-private partnerships, and development and execution of the university-wide marketing plan, the status of an executive search and enrollment management, which the President spoke to, appointment of Trustee Kerry Cooper on behalf of the university trustees to the Ohio University Foundation Board of Trustees. Um, we discussed rankings of U.S. News and World Report online master's programs. We discussed intercollegiate athletics. We had an update on student discipline matters and the voluntary early retirement programs. There were no resolutions or consent agenda items from the Executive Committee. And that concludes my report of the Executive Committee. So, let's finish the, uh, the business of the board before we move on to Dr. Sayers. And, uh, one, one last thing. Uh, let's move to the consent agenda. We have an intact set of consent resolutions. Secretary Moore, would you read item, uh, read the item name on the consent agenda? The item's name?
It's best to build a little bit of anticipation. Uh, consentage items are, uh, new program PCOE, Early Childhood and Elementary Education, new program CHSP, Athletic Training, name change Applied Communication, name change H-Com, Family Medicine, Department abolishment, H-Com, Geriatric Medicine and Gerontology, and program reviews of Voinvich Environmental Studies.
Wonderful. Thank you, Trust, uh, Secretary Moore. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So who?
Second.
Okay. Um, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. The consent agenda passes.
Okay. Um, is there any unfinished business? Of course there is. Um, we, we reversed the process there because I wanted to make sure that we got through all the business of the board. But now the, the enjoyable conversation around College Credit Plus is going to be led by, um, Dr. Sayers, Elizabeth Sayers. This is an important, uh, conversation, I think, this, uh, presentation, because we've often heard of, uh, what College Credit Plus is, but I don't think we have quite the depth and understanding of, uh, of really what it is and how, I guess it's come online to, not online, online, but on, towards us, in, in kind of a significant way. So we're really excited to hear this presentation. Thanks.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the opportunity to do this kind of first deep dive into College Credit Plus. And I'm, I'm really grateful to my colleagues in the audience who've helped prepare this presentation and have this really very deep expertise about College Credit Plus, especially Rob Callahan, who was our original College Credit Plus Director and is currently serving as the State President of the Ohio Association for Dual Enrollment Partnerships. Uh, you can wave, Rob?
Thank you.
Uh, and Katie Hensel, who has tremendous state data expertise, and my colleagues in IR, Laurlyn Taylor, and particularly Matthew Garrett, who have really dug into this data in a way we haven't before. And it's going to be really important to continue to do as we move forward. So this is, uh, my quick agenda for today. Uh, we really want to talk about the background of the program, the structure, how it impacts us, and then some opportunities going forward. So I want to start with a, a basic definition of dual enrollment. Dual enrollment simply means that you're enrolled in more than one institution at the same time. And in the state of Ohio, that usually means that it's And in the state of Ohio, that usually means that it's dual credit as well, which means that the credits that high school students are taking, the college classes count for both their high school graduation and for a college degree. It's different from other ways of earning college credit, like the AP or the International Baccalaureate, where you have to actually take a high school class and then take some kind of examination that then an institution may or may not accept and may or may not give you credit for. So very different processes as opposed to dual enrollment, where you are enrolled in the higher education institution. Dual enrollment started long before College Credit Plus in Ohio. For decades, we had the post-secondary enrollment options. But what really changed in Ohio was in 2014, when Governor Kasich really created the College Credit Plus program. So he signed that as part of a budget bill, I think, in 2014. By February 15, we had the rules from the Ohio Department of Higher Education, and we had to roll it out that fall, which is, seems like, a year seems like a long time. That's incredibly fast for this type of program and processes. And again, Rob Callahan and Carissa Anderson on the regional campuses really led this. So the state has identified some purposes for College Credit Plus. And I want to highlight the reducing the time and cost of the degree is what we typically hear of, providing workforce development, because Ohio overall is under-credentialed compared to other states. But also really wanting to increase access to higher educational opportunities for those who may have not traditionally considered a college degree. The structure of College Credit Plus, the reason things changed when we moved to College Credit Plus is because it significantly expanded who participated and who had to participate in dual enrollment. So with College Credit Plus, if you were a public institution, you were in. And you could no longer tell students that they couldn't do it if they met requirements. It also expanded those modes of delivery, right? So it used to be used to have to come to a college campus to get the class. That's not the case anymore. So now, under College Credit Plus, you can start participating in college classes in seventh grade. Just going to let that sit there for a moment, right? Where before, traditionally, you were a junior or a high school, or a junior or senior in high school, you'd take some courses. You have to be an Ohio resident. And I think this is really important. You have to demonstrate for Ohio University that you are remediation-free in both English and in reading. And if you're in math and you want to be in a math course, you have to demonstrate that you're remediation-free in math. The state of Ohio has slightly different criteria, right, which are a little bit looser. But we are maintaining our individual institution's admissions requirements, and the state gives us the flexibility to do that. Once you graduate from high school, you're out, and you can only take up to 30 credits per year, which is essentially a full load for a college student. And I say only 30 per year, because as our students know, frequently you take more than 15 credits per semester. So it does cap them at approximately five courses per semester. So where do students take College Credit Plus courses? There is the traditional option of coming to campus. But you can now take college classes at a high school with other high school students only, taught by a college faculty member. Or you can take them at a high school with high school students only, taught by a high school teacher who has been approved or credentialed to teach that college-level course. And the state of Ohio has dedicated quite a lot of funding to credentialing a lot of high school teachers to teach those courses. They have to be in a mentor relationship with the sponsoring institution. But that is one of the reasons there has been a huge change in College Credit Plus and why that is, as we will see, impacted the numbers. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, but how are they paid? How is a credentialed high school teacher paid for a College Credit Plus course? The same way?
I don't know, because it also counts for high school. Rob, do you know?
They're paid by the high school.
As part of their...
The same salary they otherwise, that's what I thought.
Yes, unload for them because it counts for their high school graduation. That's why I bring people with me. So what is new in the last year and a half or so is it used to be you could enroll kind of in any College Credit Plus that you qualified for, and the state has really changed now. So for your first 15 credits of College Credit Plus, you have to start with what are called Level One courses. These are, they're transferable courses, the dreaded Ohio Transfer Module, which in your head you should translate as Gen Ed, right? So you have to start with Gen Ed courses, start with computer science, anatomy, physiology, foreign language, anything that's for designated technical certificate. Or if there is a model pathway to move toward a major, you can start with those. And you can also take college-level, not remedial level, but college-level study skills or other career skills or academic success courses, as well as internship courses. So this actually narrows pretty dramatically the courses that are available to a beginning College Credit Plus student. Again, this is a fairly recent development. Level Two courses, it's pretty much anything that you are qualified for, except no applied instruction with one-on-one private instruction, whether it's flying an airplane or playing the oboe. Courses with high fees, starting in spring 2019, if the course fees were $750 or more, couldn't take it. Something that is ungraded unless there's some qualifications around that. But no remedial courses, no study abroad, no physical education, and no sectarian religious courses regardless of where you are in the College Credit Plus program. So who pays for College Credit Plus when students do take them? So if you're, and there are different rules for private and for home schools, but I'm going to really stick with the public stuff. So if you're from a public secondary school, attending a public college, student doesn't pay anything. There are a couple of small caveats out there around that, but essentially tuition, fees, textbooks are supplied. Your secondary school, your high school typically, sometimes your middle school, your school district, pays for the textbooks and those required course materials. And then, of course, we waive our fees and we pay for one assessment to determine a student's eligibility. Here is how the state reimburses institutions of higher ed for taking college-level courses. So if you are taking our course at a high school with a credentialed high school teacher, we get $41 a credit. If you are a traditional campus delivery, a student is coming to campus sitting with college students in a college class, we get $166 a credit. Now, we're going to talk a little bit more about that's not the only revenue that comes from these courses, but that is a very dramatic change. And I should say, I believe that money is redirected from the high school district. This is fun. Okay. So now, we're going to talk about kind of the state of Ohio trends since the program started in 2015. Since the program started, you've seen an increase in total College Credit Plus enrollments. But I think really looking at where those credits are happening is really helpful. So you see a large increase from 2015 to 2018 in the percentage of those credits happening at community college. So right now, 72% of those College Credit Plus enrollments are in community colleges. You'll see it's about split evenly between regional and main campuses of four-year institutions, and then you've got some private independent institutions in there as well. But this has primarily been a community college-associated program. And if you go back to before College Credit Plus, when it was the post-secondary program, it enrolled about 15,000 students, or about 5% of students in grades nine through 12. Now, it's about 13% of all students in nine through 12. Okay, so very dramatic change because of those changes to the structure of dual enrollment programs. This is also reflected in course completions, which is the same breakdown. Again, seeing the growth in courses completed at community colleges over the life of the program. And then by institution, okay? So this has small numbers on that. Sorry about it. So you can see, if you find our little Ohio University band, our little green band in the middle, you can see that our share has been decreasing since 2015, from about 19% to 16%. I can't read from here. I should have brought it up myself. Oh, we're blue, sorry. Colorblind and blue. Awesome. So from 10% to 7%, there we go. So not a huge share, but declining. Look at the growth at Kent State. So different institutions have had different strategies and approaches to College Credit Plus. And it changed dramatically, you know, starting to see some changes as that shakes out as the program develops. Okay. So now I'm going to shift to what College Credit Plus students who are doing, who are taking College Credit Plus courses at Ohio University. So I'm going to talk about two different populations. One is the students who are high school, or God forbid, seventh grade, who are taking college courses with us. And then I'm going to talk about our kind of matriculated students, who are college students, and what they're bringing with them from College Credit Plus. So I'm going to start with the College Credit Plus students, but I'm going to spend more time on the students who come to us and the impact of College Credit Plus. Okay. So how many College Credit Plus credits are being taken at Ohio University in Athens? So along the bottom of this chart, you can see the headcount of the number of students who are taking College Credit Plus on the Athens campus. 135 students. The bars are essentially the equivalent FTEs of those who are taking, because some take one course, some take five courses, right? So kind of collapsing it to what an FTE equivalent is. And the green line is the percentage of all of our credits. So on the Athens campus, we're looking at only 0.3% of our credits are taken by College Credit Plus students, right? So our high schoolers, not a lot are coming and taking our courses for College Credit Plus. Changes on the regional campuses, right? So here you see the headcounts in the hundreds, right, doubling from 2012. And the percentage and the full-time equivalence, much, much higher, okay? So unlike the previous graphs where you saw kind of a split, and even split between regional campus credits and main campus credits, at Ohio University, far more is happening on the regional campuses than is happening on the main campus. Oh, yeah.
Before you spend more time on the next set, you know, one of the ways I view this is a pipeline.
We're going to get there.
Yeah.
Totally, totally there with you.
Is that access advantage?
Yeah.
Or access advantage?
Yeah, yeah.
So who are the College Credit Plus students who are taking courses with us? This is, note that we're way more female than male, right? This compares to state, is about 58% female, taking College Credit Plus. And we are way more white. Like, on the state level, it's about 71% white, okay? The regional campuses, little less split between female and male, but still predominantly female and even more white because of obviously the population there, okay? Now I want to shift to students who are bringing College Credit Plus credits to Ohio University, okay? So these are students who are current college students and what the impact is, okay? So approximately 35% of incoming first-time, first-year students brought in College Credit Plus in fall of 2019. The average was approximately 17 credits per student. And over the whole cohort, so those who brought them in, about 17 credits per student, but over the whole student first-year population, about the average is 5.9 credits. And you can see the trend that College Credit Plus has those students bringing in more credits as they come in. And more bands are, more of them are taking, bringing in 30 or more credits as they come in. Similar trend on the regional campuses. This is actually all regional students, not for a full-time first time because of the way regionals are structured. But again, increase in the number and average number of credits. Approximately 10% of the incoming College Credit Plus credits are from Ohio University that our students bring in. Less than 4% of the fall 2019 students brought in Ohio credits when it comes to headcount, while about 11% of the RHE students brought in Ohio credits from us through College Credit Plus. Sorry, this is so much data, but it's so fun. So here are the top 10 dual enrollment courses for Athens. Which courses are brought in most? You've got English 1510, English 2800, seems weird. That's the state's second English, essentially. So many other institutions have two entry-level English courses. But if you look at those courses, you've got entry-level math, entry-level English, and you've got Gen Ed. Those are the primary courses on the Athens campus. Compare it to the regional campuses, some are still the same, but this was where you see communication pop up, which we talked a little bit about last time, as well as more sciences as opposed to humanities on the regional campuses. All right. Here is a kind of breakdown about who is actually bringing College Credit Plus credits to the Ohio University campus. So if you look at who is bringing up, bringing in 30 or more credits, predominantly female, predominantly white, but still a good chunk of first gen, as well as Pell-eligible students for us, right? And here, higher than the state, so the economically disadvantaged average across the state is 20%, right? So definitely that speaks to the access mission. And regional campuses, you see similar kind of trends, but amplified because of the areas that they're in, even more eligible, more first-generation students bringing credits in. So what is the effect of College Credit Plus on retention and graduation? So if a student brings in College Credit Plus, it has a positive impact on their retention rate and on their likelihood of graduating, right? So we're going to come back to this in a minute. Whoops. Oh, this is one of my favorite ones. How is College Credit Plus making an impact on time to graduation? So we've talked in here about our increase in our three-year graduation. But what's interesting is if you haven't brought in any dual enrollment credits, any College Credit Plus credits, you take about 7.9 semesters to graduate. As that increases, you take fewer credits to graduate, which makes sense. But what the little thing on the right is, is if you bring in 30 credits, what you do with them is highly variable. You might finish super early, you might stay exactly the same amount. It is really hard to predict right now how increasing credits are going to translate into time to graduation. Note that College Credit Plus only began in 2015, so we're just now starting to get graduation rates for that.
When you talk about graduation, Dr. Sayers, the students that come in with 30 credits generally are very high achievers. Now, do you say that, are you using the traditional four-year graduation? Or are you just saying graduation, meaning they leave Ohio University after some type of degree? So in other words, a lot of these kids might be doing a master's and finishing in four years or five years as opposed to six.
So it's kind of both of them. So the impact on increased likelihood to graduate is in any time under the six-year graduation rate. But what this is showing is if you come in with 30 credits, your average time to completion is 6.9 terms, which is basically three and a half years. So we're seeing that impact as well. But it's much more variable what the students do with that. Some of them take just as long and do other things, and some of them get out in four terms. So it's kind of a combination of both of those. I want to talk a little bit about replacement rate. So we know students are bringing in 30 credits. Does that actually reduce on a one-to-one basis the number of credits they take to graduate? That's a really important thing for us to track, because that's what ultimately impacts us financially, right? So replacement rate is basically the percentage of College Credit Plus courses that are fully replaced by hours that they would normally take at Ohio University. Now, if I were a parent and had a student doing this, I would just assume if you take 30, that means you get to graduate with only 90 more credits. That isn't actually what happens. The replacement rate is only about 44% right now, and it stayed at that level for the previous several years. So as we get College Credit Plus rolling in and as we get more graduation data, this is something we really have to track, because there are kind of two hypotheses about this, right? We could see, so imagine 100% is that you fully utilize those 30 credits and you only have 90 credits to graduate. So 100% would be full efficiency of use, right? Fully utilize those thirty credits and you only have ninety credits to graduate, so a hundred percent would be full efficiency of use, right? So the hypothesis is it's gonna rise from forty-four percent to a hundred percent, students are gonna get savvier. And they're gonna really, the level one, level two courses are gonna make more credits count toward your degree. And we're gonna see that kind of impact, so that's one hypothesis. The other hypothesis is that uh col- college credit plus has increased participation so much. That you're gonna see increase in average credits, but it's not necessarily gonna be go-getters. It's gonna be because it's the default option for juniors and seniors in high school, in which case we're gonna see a big spread. And that number may stay the same or go down, so as we get graduation rates coming in, we have to track this, cuz this impacts. Uh strongly the financial impact of college credit plus on us.
Right, and and I would add that as you contemplate the uh guarantee plus. The 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 specifications around what that is uh is a bit of a moving target. Because of this robust data that you're saying, and you know, this is just at the beginning of the program.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And and I will say preparing for this has helped us really think about what um indicators we wanna track going forward and try to. Um, we're we're bringing in something called heliocampus to have more robust data structure. Um, and so really excited to start tracking this in in live, real time on a regular basis, so it's been very helpful. So this is the chart, um revisiting it from yesterday, right? Which gives us the change in credit hour production, and there was a question about whether this was all college credit plus. The answer is no, that's only one factor, the primary i- uh impact is really about lower. The lower enrollments, the smaller number of people here, it is about um uh the the. Uh fewer incoming first-year students, but also largest number of students graduating on time. And then that impact of the college credit plus cour- uh classes coming in. The impact of college credit plus is variable by college because of those top ten courses that we're bringing in, that students are bringing in. So you see a disproportionate impact particularly on arts and sciences with um large volumes of college credit plus. But also, what credits they are matters, right? So those tier one, those level one courses are large lecture courses. That are taught very efficiently. And that are used to subsidize much smaller, upper-level specialty courses. So even something as sophisticated as some of this data analysis doesn't capture that either, so there's a lot of stuff to figure out what the impact is. So if we think about what we know, we know that in fall twenty eighteen, incoming students transferred in the equivalent of eight million dollars. In college credit plus coursework, that doesn't take into a account replacement rate or or any of those kinds of things. That is just the value of what that that was. Um, and it doesn't take into account the increased value of retention and increased graduation rates. Or uh uh other opportunities like that. We know that students are going to be achieving a hundred and twenty hours sooner. And we know that's gonna take a while to roll in financially because of three-year rolling averages and students starting in seventh grade and all kinds of wonderful things. Like that, but our opportunities there are really about adding majors, promoting three plus one. The faculty senate recently approved acceler- accelerated graduate pathways, which lets you take nine credits of graduate work. While you're an undergraduate student, really, and supporting if a student can get it done in three years. That's an incredible affordability boon, let's help them figure out how to do that. Um, if we know that students are coming uh and bringing in the value of the that coursework. Let's offer that coursework strategically as pipeline programs. Let's build in programming that will have positive impacts on retention and student success. Let's really start paying attention to the replacement rate, so we know what the full financial impact is. Those gen ed courses, very variable impacting col- uh colleges differently, we need to start figuring out how to incorporate that in our budget planning. And we need to think about how do we change our curriculum so that those types of courses. Are still compelling to students cuz we believe they offer real skills that help students succeed. Purdue University, right, very science tech, they started doing arts and sciences certificates around real-world skills. They weren't required, tremendous impact on enrollments in those colleges. We know students want those skills to succeed, and we need to figure out how to shape our curriculum to do that. And finally, if you think about about those um goals the state had about access. Right now, college credit plus students are economically advantaged, they're more female and they're more white. And there are real opportunities there to partner with underserved areas to help fulfill those state um uh goals. Here is actually the gaps in the state between participation in underrepresented groups in higher education. To me, this is something we know we do well, this is a tremendous opportunity for Ohio University to figure it out. And I think we tend to think about college credit plus as a uh as a a difficult thing. I always think I personally complain about the seventh graders, right? Um, we worry about the financial impact, but we cannot forget about how important and valuable this is. To students in the state of Ohio, this is one of our students from Southern, financially, it's taken a huge burden off. Across the state, the estimate is that it has it has saved over a hundred and fifty million dollars in tuition. That is huge, we're trying to take advantage of this at O- at OU Southern. They've really intentionally started building a ca- an academy model around college credit plus to bring students in. They celebrate their graduation from high school, they help them line up their courses so they can go directly into their major. They meet regularly with high school counselors, so that we can build that pipeline through eighteen school districts. To get those students to college who might otherwise not have participated. And I think when we always think about bridge programs, we think about the warm and fuzzy things, we think about, oh, I get to figure out college life, I get to adjust. That's all really, really important, that and they have great experiences, but I think what we sometimes forget. Is that it is not just, I'm trying to figure out if I have them in the picture here, it's not just about feeling good about college. This student going to college classes three times a week instead of every day. Let him get a job or let her get a job so she could contribute to her home uh budget. And means that she's gonna have college credits that her family otherwise could not afford. That's it? That's a lot, sorry.
I have two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, uh you mentioned that the the students who take college credit plus. Are more likely to be retained after their freshman year, is there any way to determine? Um, or any thoughts on whether that retention rate is. The product of the college credit cost plus class, or would the person be likely to be retained anyway, I mean, are they?
That is a great question, and that is always the question with any kind of student success data. And what institutional research has been building in the past year and a half is a retention and graduation model. That takes into account all of the incoming factors, so that you can actually control for those variables. So that controls for race, ethnicity, incoming ACT and an incoming GPA. So that increased retention is actually compared to a similar group, so we really can't isolate that it is a a college credit plus impact.
Second question is kind of for fun, um. Are there any limits on this, I mean, could a student start in seventh grade and show up in Athens and say? Here's a hundred and twenty credits, uh I wanna graduate next week.
Uh, so I I was talking with uh Dean Pennington, and she was telling me about a so- a junior student that she has. Who is finishing their associate's degree while they are graduating from high school, in their junior year of high school. And then they are transferring to Miami so that they can start medical school as quickly as possible. Um, so I I I will ask Rob, Rob, I think there are some um parameters around. The 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 cap is a hundred and twenty degree uh credits, I know that. Do you, do you know anyone who lets you graduate with a college degree and a high school degree at the same time beyond the associates?
There are a small number of institutions.
Oh, you're killing me.
There are, a very small number. And it's it's.
It was a perfect slide.
So there you go.
Trust me, I just think this is such an amazing access thing on so many different levels, and yeah, maybe it's um. Mostly white women today, and maybe that's, you know, the access we need in this particular geographical area of the country. But I think what you mentioned before that sort of the comfort slash fear factor of starting school, if it's not been something you're. You've been growing up with, that could take away a huge piece of that or or help with the comfort part. And then then the financial part, I think it make can make a huge difference difference in access. And I do think that's one of our major competitive advantages as a mission, as a public university. Because of the geographical location we have and because of our choices, that's a huge thing, it's getting more and more expensive to do that, here's a way to do it. Without some of the expense, of course, there's a there's some hurt to us financially, but. But it, I mean, it's gonna be hard to continue to be the access school without innovations like this. So I think it's really exciting, I don't know, I don't think these slides are in our deck, are they, Dave?
No, we'll.
Let's get them.
Get them before the day's over.
They're really good slides.
I'll also share the the twenty nineteen report, which has all of the data about the statewide trends and is is super interesting too.
And is Ohio a leader in this, or a lot of states doing it, what's up?
Uh, as a state of Ohio, we're we're pretty, pretty good, there are others that are uh even more kind of lockstep with the programs are. We're given some latitude as well as um there's a new program where you can actually do innovative programs and get waivers from some of the requirements. So you could go into uh um, if you wanted to waive the level one requirements and build a STEM pipeline or an arts pipeline. That's actually possible now, and and I totally agree, this is an opportunity for us, we have to stop thinking of it as a burden. Because the reality is it's not going away, and it contributes to our public mission and our access mission. And our data already shows that we are doing more access from the state as a whole. When it comes to who is who is uh bringing that that da- that college credit plus, so i- it is a place for us and it and fits with what we need to do.
Yeah, I I can't agree with you more, uh Elizabeth, about um this fear factor, I mean, this is exactly what innovation does. And um when when innovation works like this, those that respond to it as an opportunity will survive, and those that won't, won't. Because the 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 movement's on, and the second piece I think is, this is a uh clear sign, policy matters. Uh, you mentioned the the leader who brought this forward, there's another piece that uh Governor Casey brought forward too, and that was the affordability reports from the boards. What what, I I've had a chance on the third frontier to watch his leadership of those economic development dollars, and this is very consistent with that. That he wants accountability, he wanted it then, and he out of office probably still wants it. But this is a successful program from a policy perspective, if your goal is to make education more affordable and access greater. Now, what do we do with that, and and what I got from this meeting was that. First of all, i- a success there means adjustment somewhere else in the system. And that adjustment is financial, you've pointed that out, um the numbers are clear. Um, that between enrollment decline and or college credit plus, those are two major factors that are impinging today's financials. And it isn't gonna go backwards, it's it's gonna get more popular, it's clear that the numbers, the trend line is is going in the right direction, so. So I mean, I think that part of the adjustment we're making as an institution is not to put our heads in the sand, but to respond to the data. And make good strategic decisions based on what the data's telling us. And I I just love the idea that you're speaking about this as innovation and opportunity. Uh, because it was affordability and access that was the goal, and I think this is beginning to accomplish that statewide.
Yeah, and I think I think all of us are trying to retrain ourselves to to talking about college credit plus in a different way, right? And and.
We're talking about it the right way.
We gotta, we gotta get there.
Any further comments or questions, wonderful presentation, and I think everybody wants a copy of this, please, so that we can. You know, part of our task is to be advocates for higher education in Ohio, we talked about that last night. This is the kind of data that we can digest and we can elevate or pitch, you know, to the level that we feel comfortable saying, this is what's happening in our. To our community constituents around the state, so it's really helpful, thank you. Alright, we will uh move to finish. So that was the unfinished business. Thank you, um, is there any new business? Mr. President, any additional communications?
There's not.
Secretary Moore, could you please announce the date and location of our next meeting?
Trustees will have a board meeting on Thursday and Friday, March nineteenth and twentieth, uh here on the Athens campus.
Wonderful, on that note, I'd like to thank everyone for coming and to the trustees, thank you for such a um yeoman's uh big lift over the last day and a half. Thank you so much, Anna, welcome to the fray. On that note, we are adjourned.